The town council of town of Southern Shores is in session on January the 8th, 2013. I ask you to join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, December, we've lost three outstanding citizens in our town. And I thought I would just call their names to your attention tonight, just as a reminder of the three people who contributed greatly to our community and to our town. Jane Harvey, wife of our chief Bob, Frank Flory, and James Bright. They're not with us anymore. I'm grateful for all that they did to make our town the great place it is today. Join me in a moment of silence. Counsel, we have an agenda. What's your pleasure with it?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? No, we have an agenda. Your minutes of the December the 4th meeting are under tab two. No, they're not. They're under tab one. I didn't like the looks when I was on there. I don't think we did that. I have scrubbed these. I think each of you have had an opportunity to scrub them. I am satisfied with them. Any problems anywhere?
Move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Let's have a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Consent agenda. Lots of resolutions, counsel. Matters. What's your pleasure with the consent agenda? Any problems? If not, a intertation of motion to approve.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Good. We have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Wes Haskett, town planner?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a report for you for the month of December for permitting and inspections. We had six zoning permits issued. Year-to-date is 52. Twenty-five building permits were issued, which included two new single-family dwellings, one addition, three remodels, three lot disturbances, and 16 others. Year-to-date, building permits issued 150. There were 76 building inspections conducted at 40 different job sites. The number of single-family dwellings currently under construction in Southern Shores is 12, and the total amount of fees collected in December was $8,417.10. And year-to-date, fees collected is $45,535.60. Also, I want to report on wireless facilities. In December, we did receive an application from AT&amp;T to upgrade their co-location on the Dare County Water Tower adjacent to the Kitty Hawk Elementary School. They applied to upgrade their facilities or modify it for 4G LTE coverage. And that application was approved last week, and the building permit was also approved last week. So you might see some activity going on sometime in the next few months. They hope to have it done prior to the beginning of this summer season. Also, we will be having a planning board meeting next, or this month, rather, two weeks from today, January 22nd. And it's an application to add a new permitted use in the Sea Commercial Zoning District, which would be an automated ice vending machine. Some of you all may have seen these before. They're usually accessory uses seen in parking lots or shopping centers. This machine, if were to be approved, produces and vends 16-pound and 20-pound bags of ice, and it also provides ice water in one gallon or five-gallon amounts. The applicants would like to locate this machine, which would be approximately 75 square feet, in the parking lot of the Marketplace Shopping Center. An application and proposed language has been submitted and will be reviewed by the planning board at the January 22nd meeting. The only other location, there's only one in Dare County, and these folks do, the applicants do, run and operate this machine, and it's located in Buxton. I haven't seen it myself, but they did provide that information. And they also have machines located in Fuquay Varina and other places throughout western part of the state. So that'll be something that you all will be seeing probably in the next month or two. Any questions?
I have one question. When you mentioned AT&amp;T, have they said any more about another tower, or did that come up at all in this discussion of the upgrade?
No, ma'am. I haven't heard any other discussion, including the stealth tower they were proposing to locate at the Triangle Park.
Right.
From what I understand, that project was, they said shelved, and I haven't heard anything more from them on any other facilities in town.
Okay.
I did receive a call from US Cellular, and they said that they intend to try to modify their facilities on the tower sometime in the near future as well for 4G LTE coverage.
Okay.
But AT&amp;T, no, I haven't heard anything further.
Thank you.
Was it Verizon that had already worked on that tower?
Yes, so Verizon, they were the first to upgrade their facilities to 4G. So now we're looking at AT&amp;T and US Cellular. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the month of December 2012, as you can see up on the screen, some of the highlights, but officers responded to 833 calls for service. Some of the highlights were 24-foot patrols, 28 traffic control, conducted 211 residence checks, 196 business checks. They also investigators followed up on 26 different cases that we're working on. We had three motor vehicle accidents that we responded to in December, two burglaries, 13 alarm calls, 21 suspicious person calls, assisted six motorists, and six mutual aid for December. Some of the crimes that were reported, there was a total of 17. One of those was a burglary. We had four larcenies. We had two assaults, five criminal, I'm sorry, criminal damage to properties. And the officers made three criminal arrests for the month of December. They conducted 65 traffic stops for the month, and out of those, they wrote 20 written citations, and they handed out another 33 warning citations. And they also issued three parking citations for December. Questions?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Chief Harvey?
For the month of December, we had a total of 30 calls, of which 23 were medical assist, one fire, one hazardous condition, one service call, one good, about three good intent calls, and one false alarm. For the year, we finished the year with a total of 493 calls, of which 338 were medical assist, 40 were fires, and this is compared to 463 total calls in the previous year. Any questions? Thank you.
Civic Association, I see Mr. Ross Mitchell back there. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm pleased to announce that the SSCA Board of Directors voted to have the basketball court located at Seoge Park resurfaced, restriped, and to replace the basketball goal. The shower at Hillcrest Beach has been such a big success, to the point where there was actually waiting lines. The board voted to install a second shower, plus build a pergola over the both of the showers that will include benches. Do you remember the wooden keelson that washed ashore at Hillcrest, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago? It will be permanently displayed across from the shower, along the sidewalk, leading to the beach. Repairs to the crossovers damaged from Hurricane Sandy are almost complete. Repairs were made to all of the crossovers so they can be used to access the beaches, but there are still some additional repairs that we need to do. Weather permitting, all the enhancements and repairs are scheduled to be complete prior to May. Just a reminder, the SSCA General Membership Meeting is Monday night, 14th, right here in the Pitt Center, and everyone's invited. Any questions?
Have you had any, has SSCA had any contact from AT&amp;T about the stealth tower?
Not directly, no, sir. But we have tried to start conversation with AT&amp;T. The latest, I think, Councilman, you have the update on it?
Yes, we, it so happens, one of our neighbors is an executive at AT&amp;T, or a new neighbor that's moving in, and he is trying to find out what happened to the AT&amp;T application that they had in over a year ago. As you recall, AT&amp;T had a merger talks with one of the other major, T-Mobile, and that fell through. Well, during the merger talks, we were told that our contract with them, our proposed contract, was going to be put on the back shelf until that was settled, and then they would get back to us. Well, they never got back to us. The merger never went through. And now, talking to AT&amp;T, it seems that they can't find any record of ever having contacted the Civic Association, even though at the time, we had leases ready to sign on both ends. So we were at that point. They're now researching that to find out where that is, and I haven't heard back from the results of their research.
Interesting.
Anything else? Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you. Mr. Holland, Leo Holland?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Leo.
Happy New Year and all that good stuff. We had our meeting last Thursday night. I don't have a lot. I got about three things. One, there's been a change on our board. Bob North, who had been our chairman for the Parks Committee, resigned, and Chris Nason is replacing him for the remaining amount of his term. So that's a change on the board. The other one is, some of you may have seen or knew, our Chickahaw sign up here, Chickahaw and 12 got vandalized over the holidays, knocked the lights off, and so it was out of commission. That had been reported to the Southern Shores Police Department. No, I think there's a suspect, but you can't name it. And those lights have all been repaired, so it's now functioning. Again, the other sign over at Trinity and Juniper, you may have noticed, all that shrubbery is out of there now. We're redoing that whole sign. Going to redo it. Needs painting, needs to be updated. We're wanting to put some low shrubs in the front, because what was happening, what had been there, the light, the light wasn't hitting the sign properly. So we're trying to look at some ground cover, like a Juniper rug type there. So you'll see some activity there. I don't know if we need to wait a little bit on the work that's going to be done on that bridge or not, but anyhow, you'll see that's all gone. That's about all we had. Our meeting lasted about an hour the other night. Any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Any public comments, honey? I don't have any old business on the agenda. We'll turn our attention to tab three, council budget amendment, and we turn to our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tab three is a proposed budget amendment number four for this fiscal year. As we, the council discussed several meetings back, and heard us staff discuss, this is the initiation of the Canal Dredging Project budget for the remainder of this fiscal year in the amount of $50,000 to cover what we perceive to be the engineering cost, planning cost, any financial planning cost, et cetera, that may occur between now and the time that our financing is either approved and/or the beginning of the new fiscal year. I feel confident it will come way in under this amount, but this was, I propose this amount to at least get the project going for this particular year, so that we can budgetize the work that needs to be done. Just to give you an update, we are on the same timeline that I reported to you several months ago. We'll be putting out bids for a financial institution on January 14th and call for returns in two weeks thereafter. Then we'll be putting out the technical specs for a dredging contractor, hopefully by the 1st of February. The consultant engineer is working on those right now. And of course, we'll be following the timeline right on through local government commission approval in May. And then, once that's done and the contract is signed, of course, mobilization can occur prior to October, but that's when the actual dredging would occur. So we're right on our timeline that we talked about before. This is, this proposed budget amendment establishes the budget for the remainder of this fiscal year for that particular project.
Any questions? Comment? Budget amendment number four to approve. I move approval.
I'll second.
Any other discussions? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Same side. Okay, Karen. The Albemarle Rural Planning Organization Town Representatives reappointments. We have a memo here from the clerk claiming that it's time to renominate or reappoint or else nominate substitute. Current member of the technical coordinating committee is our planner, Wes Haskett. Are you the TAC?
TCC. TAC.
Representative on the TAC is Mr. Larry, council member Lohan, and both agreed to continue to represent the town on this rural planning organization. Shall we appoint them?
I move we appoint those two individuals to those two positions.
I'll second it.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. We're moving right along, counsel. I don't know when we're going to slow down. We turn our attention now to the town manager for the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I have several items to report to you tonight, but I did want to tell you that at the end of my report, I will start out by giving you an update on the remaining, the remaining time period for the street project that's underway right now, Gravy Pond and Deer Path. And I've asked the consultant engineer, Mr. Anloff, to come, and I will defer to him on that, but I'll wait till the end of my report, if you don't mind, so you can hear that full report from Mr. Anloff. Just a couple of matters of general interest. The General Assembly goes into session tomorrow. As usual, we'll be monitoring any legislation that may affect issues here on the Outer Banks and the town of Southern Shores. So I'll be passing those on to you as they come up. Obviously, there are several that we want to make sure we watch closely, one being the Mid-Curtuck Bridge funding and the Turnpike Authority funding for that project. The second item is the property values for the January 1, 2013, effective January 1, 2013 revaluation will be presented to the Board of Commissioners on February 18th, and we will be getting, or the town managers will be getting, an in-depth briefing on the 20th of February about exactly where properties are, what effect it has on individual properties within the municipalities. So what will happen on the 18th will be a general presentation by the assessor to the Board of Commissioners that evening, and then they will start to trickle out, and individuals will begin to get their individual notices probably around the 1st of March or end of February. But we will be privy to what exactly is happening with our town as a whole and the averages so that we can begin some sort of budget planning when we get that. And following up on Councilman Sanders' suggestion about construction and demolition debris, we have met with the town of Kitty Hawk staff, and we are again meeting with town of Duck and town of Kitty Hawk again to talk about some possibilities for collecting construction and demolition debris from citizens of Southern Shores. Currently, we do not have that service. They haul it. I believe your inquiry was why can't citizens use that site, and we just do not have a disposal bin at that site. That is owned by the town of Kitty Hawk, and they have a disposal bin there, and it's funded by their taxpayers, and so that's why they limit it, the C&amp;D bin, to their citizens. It's my understanding that this town had it at one time in the past at some location, I guess, maybe behind the fire department. I don't know. But I propose that we discuss this further at the workshop session to talk about potential funding and the need for it, et cetera. I have not been able to grasp yet from citizens what level of need or desire there is for that particular service. But we are having discussions with the manager of Kitty Hawk and the manager of Duck about possibly doing something joint venture if the towns want to fund that. The January workshop agenda, at this particular point in time, as I said, we had proposed a discussion about the C&amp;D initiative, and also we'll be recommending to the mayor that we go ahead and put the engineering request for proposal returns for that particular meeting to talk about. As you got them over a month ago, we can, my recommendation is we go ahead and talk about that. I've had several inquiries from engineering firms that have submitted. Also, a third item for that meeting, the finance officer and I have conferred with the town auditor about updating the town's purchasing and bid policy, and we have come to make a recommendation to the council to update that policy, to bring it more in line with the North Carolina general statutes. And so I'll be making that recommendation to you at that workshop meeting as well.
We have not been in violation of statutes, have we?
We have not been in violation, no, sir.
Thank you.
What is causing this is confusion between the way we, the way it was adopted, the way we've put it in practical use, and then when auditing occurs, there seems to be some confusion from the auditing standpoint at the end of the year. So by making this change, that would hopefully eliminate the confusion from the auditor's standpoint when they go back and try to match up the actual bidding and purchasing with the authority that's granted on the books. The, as I sent out to you, and as you probably know by now, the Trinity Bridge repair work that we described in our earlier work session has, is being proposed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation on January 28th, 29th, and 30th. At that time, they will install, do some digging and install new tiebacks, raise the railings, and remove the asphalt from the center of the bridge, and the new base will be put back on top, and there will be some period of time to allow that to settle before we'll be able to pave again. During those three days, the bridge will be closed, and we are getting that out to all the medium that we can to notify residents and citizens that the bridge will be closed, that being three weeks from now.
Are we going to have the electric sign?
I don't think we'll be having that this time. It's in use on Hatteras Island, and because it's only three-day closure, doubt we're going to be able to get that. I've made inquiry, but we do have our own signs up at this point in time, and we'll be blocking it, have another sign for local traffic only when it actually occurs. I don't think we're going to be able to get the larger sign this time.
Who are you dealing with on that bridge?
Department of Transportation is our agent, agent who constructed that. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand. That's the question. That's who is actually doing the work on it.
Is there an engineer assigned?
Yes, sir. There are three different engineers from the Bridge Department at the division office that are working on that bridge.
Are they the same ones that screwed it up?
They will be making the repairs.
I sure hope so. The thing's a mess, and it's an embarrassment to the town.
There any more questions? I'll answer, take questions, and then I'll defer to Mr. Anloff on the, on the Gravy Pond and Deer Path projects.
I have a question on Tall Pine Bridge. Has the, have the engineers, the engineering company for the Tall Pine Bridge come to a conclusion as to whether they want to get paid, the amount of money they deem fit for their services, as opposed to what the state and federal government think they should get paid?
The week before Christmas, they did come to the resolution on the restitution contract, and that'll be sent to me as soon as it makes, finds its way through the bureaucracy of DOT. They'll be forwarding that to us for consideration. It will be more than the original estimate, so we'll have to look at it to see what it comes out to be when it arrives. Nothing else, I will turn it over to Mr. Anloff for a report on the ongoing street rebuild project.
Good evening, town council. Thank you, George, for breaking up what would have been an awkward segue between mess and embarrassment and what I'm about to talk you about. We have three roadways under construction. I'll start with the best. Spindrift is near 100% completion. It's a great improvement to the town. It turned out very nice. It's in very good shape. Deer Path Lane, after Hurricane Sandy, we experienced some saturation of the sub-bass materials, the ABC, the aggregate base course. And the material that's been brought to the site is consistent with DOT specifications, but it has an affinity for water, and it's caused us significant problems during the construction. I've worked closely with the general contractor to try to do the additional testing and to try to make sure that the project's proceeding in such a way that it's a minimal inconvenience to the residents there, and yet we can gain some level of confidence that what we pave will stand the test of time and provide the town with a roadway that meets the minimum life expectancy for an asphalt, for a flexible pavement surface. Today, on that roadway, on the entrance road, there was a particular section around Station 2+30 that was showing visible failures, visual structural failures by simple traffic loads. That section was, the top three inches of that section was removed with a motor grader, and material obtained from a different source was brought into that roadway and put in place and proof- place and proof rolled again. And this was all done with the oversight of the geotechnical engineer from G E T Solutions, and I myself was present, and there were representatives from RPC there as well. So we're hoping that these latest batch of improvements rectify that situation. My understanding and conversations with RPC is that they intend to fine grade that roadway, have that fine grading completed by the end of this week, and are looking to pave on Monday and Tuesday of next week, provided that the roadway meets the compaction or density testing that's specified in the technical specifications for the project. So Deer Path, as it stands, because it has the full section of aggregate base course, they're going to fine grade it and have that fine grading, that ABC tested for compaction, provided it meets that specification. They plan to move forward with paving, and then the fine grading in the shoulders and seating and completing that project. Gravy Pond is a little further back in the schedule. The cross-section of the road has four inches of ABC stone with a bioxyl geogrid that's sandwiched in between a second layer of four inches of stone. What's been placed on Gravy Pond is the first four inches of stone. And that material, because, in part because of the canopy, in part because of the shape of the road, that the road itself is a sump, it has a higher moisture content, it's higher than the optimum moisture. We're looking for the cooperation of Mother Nature to try to get the moisture content down closer to optimum range, and they are working to motor grade it, scarify it, in order to get it ready to place the bioxyl geogrid and the second four inches of stone. And we'll be evaluating that throughout this week and next week to see if we can get that to the optimum moisture content. The good news on Gravy Pond is that the driveway work, concrete work for the curb and gutters is almost near completion. They were forming up the last two driveways when I was there today, and I believe they were poured later on this afternoon. So we'll check into that tomorrow. Concrete work is nearing completion, but as far as the installation of the aggregate base course, we have to get that first four inches stable before they can apply the bioxyl geogrid in the next four inches. As far as the completion schedule of that, it's a little more open-ended because of the weather. And if we are able to have warm days without precipitation, we'll have a more favorable outcome. That is generally the update. Do any of you have questions?
I do. And the mica controversy?
It may be completely off-base, but it is a personal theory of mine that based on, and I learned a new word today, micaceous. Micaceous indicating content of mica, in this case, a high mica content. There is evidence that the aggregate base course has a mica content. Whether it could be called high or average or low is a matter of dispute. There's no written technical specification that addresses the mica content in aggregate base course within the North Carolina Department of Transportation specifications or any written specification in the state of North Carolina. There's some indication by written correspondence from Vulcan that it's the same in Virginia, that there's no technical specification. And the only reason I bring up the state of Virginia is because Vulcan provides this material to V dot projects as well as NCDOT projects. And this material has been, according to them, has been used on numerous roadways for the sub-bass without any problem. And I believe that to be true, unless you get a heavy precipitation event like Hurricane Sandy, when the road sub-bass is at its most vulnerable point, when you're placing the stone and it gets inundated with water, and this sub-bass material that's high in mica content, if in fact it is high, again, this is an observation that I've made, has an affinity for water. It wants to hold it. It makes it more difficult to dry it out. Everything that we've seen when the stone does dry out appears to indicate that by the methods that we have to evaluate its stability is that it is structurally sound. We have, the three things that we have to look for are the gradation of the stone. Does it meet the technical specification? And the gradation is a particle size distribution, a mixture of stone all the way down to the finest particle, and they have to meet a range. All the testing that's been done indicates this stone meets gradation. If it didn't meet gradation, I would have the opportunity to refuse the material and say that it was deficient. It meets gradation, my opportunity to refuse the material is gone. The next test is a compaction testing. They take a nuclear density gauge, they probe a hole in the ground, they pound a cone of the material that's there, they figure out what 100% compact is for this material in situ, they use the gauge, fill out a table, come up with a set of values. If they get 100% compaction of that material, it means that they've reached the optimum compaction for that material in situ, and if it meets 100%, that passes specification. The last thing that we have to look at is its structural soundness. You take a dump truck full of stone, and you roll it, it's called proof rolling, you roll it over the material, if the material doesn't deflect under that load, it's considered structurally sound. Those are the only things that are written in the specification that say you can accept or deny material or installation practices, as long as everything follows the industry standards and this material meets the technical specifications. We have very little grounds to refuse it. I, as the resident engineer, can't say I have a hunch about mica, it's not good. I've read some reports from Sweden where it's really not good for the structural soundness in the presence of moisture. I refuse the material. We all end up in court if that happens. I have to have a technical basis for rejection, and so far, everything that we found indicates the material meets gradation. We have evidence that's been used on other projects and that it's suitable. When it dries out and reaches optimum moisture, are they able to get the 100% compaction? And it proves itself to be structurally sound. When that roadway dries out, it's as hard as concrete. It's extremely hard. When they used the vibratory roller on it, when they were getting the roadway fine graded before we went into this additional testing, the vibratory roller was actually bouncing sideways on it, it was so hard. It leads me to believe, at the end of the day, that we're going to have a roadway that's structurally sound. Right now, when it's open to receive precipitation, every time that it gets ready to be fine graded, we get a rain, and then it's rutted up, it's muddy, it's sloppy, and I get phone calls from all the residents. My long-term hope is, and what we're observing and our goal is, to get it dried out, get it compacted, and allow the geotechnical firm to come in and test it to see that it's 100% compact before they move forward with paving it. I've shared all of my hunches, my opinions, and my desires with the general contractor. It's my belief that they also want to have a very successful project, and they also are in this, in that they, you know, this project is not going well by my standards. And it's not necessarily due to any, the performance of the, myself as the engineer or the general contractor. It has to do with the materials and the weather and the conditions that we've been met with. But it's my understanding that they are very concerned about the final product. Eddie Valduesso from RPC is here tonight. I told him that I'd be giving this update, and he offered to come to the meeting. If there's any specific questions about their schedule, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer them, but they are very concerned about the project. We all want to have a good, final, successful project. I have fielded more phone calls. I believe that I've spoken to every single resident on both of those streets, and many of them more than once. We've done everything possible to try to help people. I've gotten complaints about tracking dirt into people's garages, about on their driveways, about pressure washing, about car detailing, about shrubbery removal, about extending driveway aprons. It's, and that people can't get their cars up and down the hills, that it's a safety hazard. It's, I could go on and on, but we're doing the best we can.
Compaction testing is done in situ, right?
Yes, sir.
Results are immediately known?
They are. Well, relative, it's done in the field. The calculations are done in the field.
Is it a continuous test, a rolling test, or a point test?
It's a point test. They actually, there's a yellow gauge with a probe. They put a hole in the ground, they stick the probe in the ground. It's got a radioactive bit on the tip. They find out the results, fill out a table, and they will know within a few minutes of...
Who specifies the spots to be tested?
The specifications indicate a frequency. It's, I believe it's every 200 feet. The roadway is 1,400 some feet total, so there'd be, the number of test frequency would be, I think it's a number of three, a minimum per roadway or every 200 feet up to, it breaks it apart. I don't remember the exact specification, but there'll be a number of tests.
The cul-de-sac at the south end of Gravy Pond, this afternoon, is still a mess.
Yes, sir.
And we've had, what, four dry days?
And that entire cul-de-sac has been rebuilt. The original stone was removed in its entirety.
Yes.
From a point before that cul-de-sac, and that whole cul-de-sac was rebuilt, and I believe with the same material. The same, the same supplier supplied material from the same...
The material that they were putting down this afternoon on Deer Path, the entry of Deer Path?
The entrance to Deer Path was from a different source.
It didn't look any different from what they put down before?
It was, it was different in color and different in texture in that it had a higher, in my opinion, had a higher percent sand as the fines, where the, where the material that's there has a higher content of clay or mica other than sand. The colors were pretty pronounced in their difference. One was kind of a tannish gray, and the other was a real clayey gray, a dark gray. So I, in fact, when I was driving by, I didn't realize that the truck had come because I'd gone down to Gravy Pond to look at the concrete work. And I almost went on by the site, but the color was so markedly different that I knew that the material had been delivered. It was a lot drier as well.
Is the paid contract, is the testing contractor paid by the prime contractor by this town?
No, that's it. That's, we, they represent the town. There's a contract directly with the town through G E T Solutions. So they work for the town.
For you, in effect?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming, Joe.
You're welcome.
I understand you, all four, all five of your women are under the weather. As an aside, I don't know if it's humorous or not, but it was to me, I had a call from one of the residents who's been after me quite frequently yesterday, the day before. And she asked me if I remembered the movie, the bridge over the River Kwai.
Oh, jeez.
And I said, yes, ma'am. And she said, do you remember that Alex Glennis played the part of the Colonel? And I said, yes, ma'am. And do you remember toward the end of the movie, they got the bridge built, and the Colonel was sitting off by himself miserably, and he said, as a result of finishing the bridge for the use of the enemy, he said, exclaimed, "My God, what have I done?" And she asked me, "Have you asked that question lately?" That's an example of the kind of unease that the people are having. It's a mess, and I hate like crazy that we've imposed it on these people. The original completion date was the 15th of December.
Council, do you have any questions?
I have. While we're on the subject of roads, what's the status of our request for bids on Honeysuckle? Does that do?
We are running the advertisement for bids right now, as we speak, in tomorrow's paper, asking for return on the 29th, I believe, of this month. And...
Is the bid informally?
The bid period is, it's, we're connecting, it is an informal bid. The bid sets have been delivered to RPC in Barn Hill. They were actually delivered yesterday, so they have them in possession, so they can start to get, to work on that. We got a, I got a call today from the, I think it's the Hispanic Contractors Organization at O'Reilly for a set of plans and technical specifications electronically. They represent minority and women business participation. So we sent that, I sent that out electronically, but it does conclude on the 29th. And because we'll be doing the bid informally, we'll be able to open them with less than three bidders. So it's being advertised as though it's, you know, we're following that process of advertising and notifying potential bidders through the newspapers, but beyond that, we'll be able to open them on the 29th.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Town president?
I don't have anything that will belabor the meeting any longer.
I don't have anything more to say. Larry?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Fred, David?
Just a couple of things. Thanks to the town manager there for looking into the CND issue for me. One thing that I do, I would like to see, if it's possible, before we get into that discussion at the time we do our planning for, for the next year, is it possible before that meeting that we could do a, some kind of online questionnaire for the citizens to indicate their agreement that there's a need for that, or if they would use that like we did with the dog ordinance?
I will take direction from the council on that. If y'all would like to develop a published poll like we did, I'll be glad to try to propose, put that together.
The reason I ask is it's difficult for us to really, I have a very strong opinion and, and about it, and believe I know what I'm talking about when it comes to that, but, you know, we don't usually have much of an audience, and so we don't get a whole lot of feedback from the citizens on issues like that, or at least not since we finished, we, we ended that service.
I have never, people don't hesitate to call me. I've never heard anyone bring up that issue with me. I don't know about other council members. I didn't realize it was that much of an issue when you first brought it to the attention of council, David. The prior trash receptacles, we had dumpsters behind the firehouse. They were used for everything, including trash of people that were leaving town, didn't want to leave their cans out, things like that. It finally became such a burden that we, I think a prior council, no, we didn't do it. A prior council just removed them. Well, they first, I think, they got rid of the dumpsters and substituted just the ordinary green trash containers, did they not?
Yes.
Amicus?
Yes.
And that got so bad that they did away with that.
Yes. And we discussed at one point putting cameras up because one of the things we really believe and know is that people from other towns drop off their trash on the way. So that was one of the other reasons we dropped it.
The unintended consequence of that is that the trash cans that belonged to S S C A became then overflowed because the town removed theirs. So the S S C A picked up the burden of trash of people leaving town.
And to further explain, when we're talking about CND, we're talking about weekend projects that the homeowners have, broken, broken items or repairs to decks and railings where the materials are not picked up. Construction material like that is not picked up currently through any process that this town controls. I do believe that most of our citizens in the past have been able to find a construction dumpster nearby. Maybe with 12 homes under construction, that's where it's going now. dumpster nearby. Maybe with 12 homes under construction, that's where it's going now. But the things accumulate at homes that need to be gotten rid of, but there's no real means in this town to do it legitimately. It's, I think a lot of citizens used to go over to Kitty Hawk and drop it off until it was discovered they, they were not Kitty Hawk citizens, therefore not eligible to do so. I would just like to get the message out that we're considering that possibility, and I would like to see, you know, more interest shown by the public. Otherwise, I could understand why we wouldn't entertain it.
Oh, I don't know. Questionnaire? What do you think?
I, I guess what I'm waiting for is I'd rather see us find out what we're talking about as a possibility of a joint venture, which says whether we can do it with one another, and then if there is, before we commit to it, try to find that out.
I mean, we have, I don't see it to be a difficult thing to deal with. We have a large item pickup, we have a computer part pickup, we have battery and oil pickup and paint pickup, so I mean, if we do a survey, monkey, we ask the question, do you have construction debris to be picked up, you know, and, you know, one question, yes or no, would you like it picked up, you know, boom. If you get to five people respond at that point, I'm not sure we worry about it. If you get 500 people who say they've got stuff, then we negotiate a truck to run down the street, and on a certain day, we do a construction debris pickup and solve that old problem without getting into garbage cans, dumpsters, and God knows what else. And just hit it once and that's it. I don't know. And after that, if you miss the pickup, I guess you wait a year or do whatever it is, you know, life or go put it in a dump truck and go take yourself down to the dumps, you know, and do it that way. So I mean, I have no problem, and I'm asking, it's a very simple question, you know, do you have any, do you want to remove? Nobody responds, we know the answer.
Can you pick any guidance out of this discussion yet, Mr. Manager? Is there a glimmer of guidance?
I mean, I could come up with, I think, a rational, neutral question for a survey poll. The confusing part's going to be, we already fund two large item pickups.
I'm talking about, the stuff is excluded.
Well, they, they will pick up some of this stuff on those large item days is our challenge, though. Broken chairs, et cetera. They'll pick that kind of stuff up. So I'd have to delineate the fact that this is just construction-type debris in the question, I think. In other words, do you do backyard projects? And make sure they understand that contractors already are prohibited and will be prohibited from taking it to this, any kind of service. So I, I mean, I can formulate, I think, something that we can put on the, on the survey, if that's what council wants to do. You know, last time we did that, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was sanctioned by council because we had a huge turnout, and it was more like a referendum, virtual referendum.
The secret on a questionnaire is getting the right question. Because if you just say something like, would you like to have this? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I may never use it, but I'd sure like to have it, so it's really key to how you ask the question.
Do you have any construction material you need picked up when you move from your premises? Yes or no?
I know today could be a yes.
If we're, if we're going to look into this with, along with Duck and Kitty Hawk and see what the costs are, if council wants to do a survey at that point, hopefully there'll be some more notice about the possibility in between.
And they may give us some information as to what happens in their town.
Right.
I mean, which might help us in this process, since especially Kitty Hawk already has it.
While we're talking about this, I did want to bring up one aspect of us going over and sitting at the site and meeting with Kitty Hawk officials. Some discussion has come up lately because Kitty Hawk has rightly so started to really clamp down on the non-residents who use their dumpster. They were requiring a driver's license, and confusion, of course, comes up when someone has a address that says Kitty, a Southern Shore Street, Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, because we all share the same zip code and post office. So Kitty Hawk has now got our street map, Duck's street map, and that kind of started a lot of the recent discussion over there. So there were a lot of residents, apparently, who were producing a Kitty Hawk driver's license when in fact that street was not a Kitty Hawk street. It was either in Southern Shores or Duck.
See, why don't they live in Portsmouth or Suffolk and they're down there working on the house?
So there has been some activity?
Oh, yes, there definitely is. I even have a number of attempts to use their dumpster, he said, between 40 and 50 a week that are non-residents of Kitty Hawk. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying there, a lot of that may have been Duck as well, but an estimate of about 40 or 50 attempts to use it. They don't know if they're contractors or residents or what either, so he would typically be able to pick out a contractor, I assume.
Has it given you any clues to volume that is generated? Are we talking about a dumpster every few days?
They dump every, I believe, I've got, they dump every three days in Kitty Hawk.
Every three days?
Mm-hmm. It's twice a week.
So this is large item stuff, it's not just construction?
Yeah, it's large items, it's, it's attics, basements, under the house type stuff as well as seeing typical construction debris.
The other item I had, I just noticed in the paper today that the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles is going to start collecting the vehicle tax at the time of registration renewal. And I didn't know whether that was going to change any timing of our revenue stream or what. I tried to check it on their website, and they, they just refer you back to the county that you're from as far as trying to determine what your tax is. I was just surprised to see that. I didn't, I didn't have any prior inklings that the state was going to now collect that tax for the counties, which of course includes our tax.
I'm sure Dare County will let us know if there's any projected change in the cash flow and timing, but I, we have not been notified of any different, any difference.
Thank you.
One question, when is our council retreat?
We haven't talked about a retreat.
That's why I have a question.
What retreat are you talking about?
Well, we all get together for a few days and, two days of talk.
Does council want a retreat?
I thought we were going to combine it with a budget workshop in February. I guess I've been working under that assumption. Which is, the February workshop is the 19th. Last year we did like, I think if I recall correctly, we did like the budget one whole day and then did other items like the following day, in the morning.
You want to expand it to a two-day affair and have a budget workshop one day and all other stuff today?
You could.
Or do we want all other stuff before we have the budget workshop?
Makes more sense.
That makes more sense, doesn't it?
Might depend how much and what they are, I guess.
What's your plan?
February the 19th, or is it February the 1st?
February 19th is the workshop.
What day?
Tuesday.
Let me comment on that. We're not, that's not going to be a fact and figure budget proposal time, because we will not have any new figures. That's going to be, as far as the budget, we were talking concept, I think, from staff.
Everything we do will be a budget workshop.
Which really ties it into the other issues that we might want to talk about, because it's informational gathering for you folks as well as for us, you know? I would think let's plan on those for that two days and we'll work out the agenda and schedules as we get closer.
19th and 20th, those are a retreat? To include the budget workshop?
What time we start?
Please you?
Sure.
I like to say, I always want us to start at eight, you and me, so don't ask me.
We will establish the time.
I'm going to have to, the next day on the 20th now, at 10 o'clock, as I said, we will be meeting with the county assessor to go over the values for the town of Southern Shores. So I don't think I want to, need to miss that opportunity to meet with the assessor on the 20th.
Do we need two days, or can we do it all at one?
What time is that?
That's at 10.
10 o'clock.
We could do it the 19th in the afternoon of the 20th.
That would be all right with me, and we can always leave the afternoon the 25th, because maybe you're right, we may finish it in one day.
Morning of the 19th and afternoon of the 20th.
Go into the afternoon of the first day if necessary. We will develop an agenda.
Yep, good idea.
Start at six in the morning.
There you go.
I'd like to ask the mayor, Putim, and councilman Kowalski to offer their services and advice to the town manager to the extent that he wants to lean on you to develop an agenda.
Sure, absolutely.
Was that your one item?
I don't believe that.
Mayor Putim?
I have nothing to say, thank you.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. One hour and one minute.